Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, February 25th. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2020 regular meeting?
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor? That passes. Can I have the motion to approve the minutes of the February 13th, 2020 special meeting?
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. We have an opportunity for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to reports and discussion. And first, we have a presentation by our CLS specials team and students.
You can answer down at the desk if you want. Just stand over on the side, okay? When you're done with your questions, okay?
Somebody should be taking some pictures.
Yeah.
Trying to take some?
We are a prefecture from CLS. We have applied for this position to make a personal essay explaining why we wanted to represent our class in the values of the area of power care for a unit. It was our respect, responsibility, integrity, and collaboration. We encouraged our fellow students to do their best and earn grades for our houses. There's no cop talk, but one for me.
So this is Reggie. He's in third grade. Reggie, how did it make you feel to be chosen as a prefecture?
It made me feel good and proud to wear the badge. I felt special because I was the only one in my class to be chosen as a prefecture.
Tell us about some of your responsibilities.
If someone wasn't doing the right thing, I would say, "Hey, we aren't supposed to do that." In PE, when we were lining up, the prefect would hold the bead and determine if the kids in line were doing the right thing and if they earned a grade or not. It made me feel good to have the responsibility to make sure that if the kids were good or not.
And last, what did you learn best about this whole program?
I think a lot of people had fun. At least 80% of the school loves Harry Potter, so people got to have one of their favorite things coming to the school. I think the kids did a better job listening when they knew they could earn a grade.
That's smart. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate and I'm in fourth grade. In addition to the character education, we did Harry Potter activities in all of our specials. In art, we made mythical creatures, continuous line owls, and scraped paint to castles. In library, we read from the play Harry Potter and the Cursed Child, listened to Carol's Will of the Guard, and the other activities.
Okay, so we decided since we're the elementary school and, you know, fun has to be part of everything that we do, we have a little interactive fun for you all tonight. So my prefectures are going to give you each a clipboard and a Sharpie marker, and I am going to demonstrate how the third graders made owls in less than 30 seconds with never taking their pen off the paper, and you all get to make one tonight, too.
Okay.
So you're going to get a piece of paper and a Sharpie marker. For those of you who are spending more time not getting to a break or fix that line or use a ruler, this is going to be a real challenge for you. But I just want to say that what makes these owls so fantastic is that they're a little wonky, they're a little beard, and they shouldn't be perfect. They all need to come out with some sweet personality, and I think you're going to have fun doing it. So continuous line drawing is something that artists do to warm up, to get those artistic juices flowing. And you never take your pen off the paper, which is so weird because when you sketch, it's always coming up. So you need to really focus on keeping that pen attached to the paper all the time. I'm going to do a quick demo.
Thanks very much.
For my students, I do it twice. I'm just going to do it once for y'all. And you're going to watch my process as I describe it, and then you're going to uncap that Sharpie, and you're all going to draw yourself an owl in 30 seconds, never taking your pen off your paper. Okay, here we go. So first I get -- and there's a reason why I'm doing everything like three times because I'm going to show you the finished piece at the end and why we did it that way. So the first thing you do is you get your arm going in an oval before you lower it down. And then you make a nice big oval on your paper, maybe three. Then I'm going to do this little part of the owl here. I'm going to do the little ear tufts. I'm going to come down and do an eye. You notice I'm not picking up my pen. I'm just keeping it there, driving over here, doing the other eye, coming over here, adding some cute little wings, driving over here, adding a couple more wings, and then maybe some little owl feet. Okay, there you go. On your mark, get set.
He's going to be graded?
Oh, I hope not.
Oh, boy.
Do you know what she did last?
Pick up those pens, you both.
Don't pick up your pen. It's the ears, I think.
Oh, my God.
What is that?
I have to say, this is a little great activity for those kids who want to erase every little line. We really had a reason enough and have a good time with it and not worry so much about the final project.
I didn't get any.
I didn't get wings.
Oh, you're fresh. This is looking cool.
Whitney, no cheating.
Nicely done. When you're done, cap those glasses. All right, so I do want to just show you, after the students finish their continuous line lines, they learn to find the new shapes they created.
Are you laughing at me?
I like that he's just great.
Very abstract.
Mine looks like an owl happy.
So if your lines and eyes are wonky and not even, it doesn't matter. So this was their finished product. And with the Harry Potter unit, we just made it an owl. I was going to do this kind of a drawing project, but to just tie it into Harry Potter, since owls are such a big part of the book, we just made this one of our Harry Potter projects. So it's not like we did anything, you know, really out of the ordinary. We just tied it in wherever we could to make it a little bit more fun for the kiddos. So I hope you enjoy your brief little art lesson.
That was stressful.
...
Oh, no, get your pictures. Okay, so Alex, they're going to quietly collect that while you come up and read your card, please.
Well, you get speakers, too, yeah.
That's quite your style. The class is pretty good.
Hello, my name is Alex. I'm in fourth grade. In music, we played a Harry Potter rhythm song, a magic game, or theme music for Harry Potter. In PE, we played a mad scientist performance. Instead, we had presentations for mad science and feel-like pictures from the wildlife experience of live animals. Please enjoy this video showing some of the exciting things we did during the Harry Potter period.
Thank you, Reggie.
And behind you, there is a short little video to summarize the entire five-week unit. Do you want to check it out? Can we pause it to check if the building? Can you brush the candy like that? Sorry about that. Mark, let me see your owl.
It's kind of like a state patrol, but a little longer, but it's still super fun. You got to help people when they need help, keep people from arguing. I learned that being a prefecture is kind of about a journey, like learning and respecting and being a leader. So the most challenging part of being a prefecture was telling my classmates to be quiet and not. And the most, my most favorite part was, was like beginning to share more at the special. But for me, my advice for future prefectures is that they should be respectful, responsible. They should be respectful and responsible to teachers.
Is there anything else you'd like to ask?
I love my job as a prefecture.
Okay, say bye.
Bye.
We'd also like to thank the PTSO and Rundek Science Foundation for funding some of the materials and events. Lastly, we would like to thank our parents for bringing us here tonight. Thank you guys all so much.
Is that the end? Well, we'd like to thank you guys all for coming. We really appreciate it. We've heard a lot about this program, but you guys have really brought it to life for us today, getting to see the video and everything. And I'd like to thank the students for coming. I know it's hard to come up here and speak in front of everybody, so we thank you so much for coming and talking to us. Thank you for coming out.
And thank you for the interactive portion.
Thanks, yes, that was great. I don't know about that, but...
Might get invited to another event.
We look forward to it.
Yeah.
Yes. So we're going to move on to our capital project mid-year, mid-project update. Lou Rodriguez, our plumber. Are you going to have us do it?
You top guy? You top guy?
Have us build something?
It wasn't like the school I went to.
No, mine neither.
I'm not an artist. It looks like an owl.
We haven't talked in a while.
It's not good, but it looks like an owl.
I got the nose. He's got questions. He's going to back me up.
All right.
We want to, you know, just give you an update of where we are with the project. We're halfway through. You guys approved a close to $12.1 million project, and, you know, we'll walk through it, let you guys ask any questions you might have. What we're going to talk about today are really, you know, what's important is talking about these prime contractors, how they're doing, and where they are in the progress. And we're also going to talk about schedule, budget, talk about the budget a little bit, and then just show some photos at the end of some of the stuff that's in play. So what I'm going to do is just really briefly, you guys have the narrative in front of you, but I want to talk about these four contractors. Key Interiors is your general work contractor, so they are encompassing a lot of the different things that wrap around the rest of the contractors. Their scopes of work, we talked about the acoustic treatment that was at the high school gymnasium. That's an important thing that was done. Kitchen upgrades at Chancellor, that was done. Middle school, the gym renovation, if you guys have been in there, looks really great. That was completed this summer. Over spring break, we're going to be doing some locker refurbishment over Chancellor, so it's really just retooling of the existing lockers there, primarily a paint job and, you know, just make them look better. We did asbestos paint, and you're going to see a plan that shows the phasing of the middle school, high school, how we did, how we're doing the asbestos floor abatement and new flooring. We also did ceiling replacements throughout, physics room renovation as well. So Key Interiors is just like an all-around contractor, filling in a lot of different types of work. Dutch Mechanical, their main scope of work here was sanitary system upgrade. So your infrastructure within your tunnels was degrading, so they did some work there. They did kitchen renovation work at Chancellor, and they're going to be coming back and doing kitchen renovation work here at the high school. SNO Construction is your HVAC contractor, and they were really here, your latest project, your latest addition, the clear story, the high-story space and the new addition, it really was about trying to exhaust and get some of that heat out of that area. So that's really what their prime scope of work was. Hudson Valley Electric, they've been doing work on your lighting side, upgrading the lighting. We did take a lot of work away from that. We did some work with Lime Energy. So Lime Energy came in and did some lighting replacements, which really saved a lot of money. So we took work away from that, but they did still do some lighting replacements. They were involved in the kitchen upgrades. New generator here at this campus, that's being put in play. And then there's a solo teaching station that's also going to be put in play. Zero Draft is your window replacement contractor. So because of the volume of work on the windows and the curved walls, we felt that that was a good break, you know, to break out as a prime contractor, supposed to put it under a GC to have them mark it up. This summer, all the windows were replaced here that were part of the scope of work. Next summer, we're going to be moving to Chancellor and doing the curtain wall replacement. So that work was done, and we feel pretty good about that work. Product is good, I think. You know, Sheldon's been involved in all of the supplemental approval process on the products that we're putting in place. So that's important, you know, having the owner, you know, there when this is happening. Actor is your abatement contractor, so we needed them to do the flooring abatement. And you'll see a little bit of the phasing that was completed there. They're going to come back this coming summer to complete the rest of the flooring abatement that these weeks have done. Puff is your spray foam roofing contractor. They have completed all of their work. We're just going to close that process with them. And you have now a 15-year extended warranty with that work that was done. Del Sigdorf Companies was the most recent company that we made a recommendation on, close to a million dollars worth of work on the site side. And right now, they're in the supplemental approval process, and we're looking to start work as soon as April, if we can. Once weather works, we're looking to start work with that. Those are the contractors that you currently have in play. That's who we're playing, you know, and they're all doing a pretty good job, and they're keeping to the schedule that we've laid down. Talking about schedules, phase one, all the work was completed according to schedule. Right now, we're just working punchless items. Phase two, so phase one was summer of 2019. Phase two is going to be summer of 2020. Curtain wall at the, at Chancellor, that's going to be one of the big scopes of work. We have that, that's going to be coming up. Site work at sports field, site work, and parking circulation. So it's not just sports fields, but the parking and circulation in front of this building is also going to be worked on. Locker replacements in this building. We decided to bring on a separate company and take credit back to the GC to really get the lockers that you guys really want, so we're going to be having that work done. So remaining window replacements, there was just, when I say that, there was, all the work was done, but, you know, there's always retooling of windows, some sills that's going to be happening here at this building.
Lou, could you talk about the lockers? I know there was so much conversation about the lockers, so what is the final lockers that we're getting now or what's happening? You just said there's a change?
Actually, Del Sigdorf is a better one than I thought, because it's been...
It's been a lot of talk about lockers.
Yeah, initially, the locker plan was to replace the lockers with two-tiered lockers, one-foot lockers in the middle school. And we have a sample locker from the contractor. We brought it up to Mr. Camper and showed his app, and they thought that lockers could be a little too small for them. So we were trying to come up with a new plan for different type of locker that they could fit their backpacks in. And we handled, we wanted a private 15-inch locker. And then also in the 130 and 140 wings, they were also scheduled to get five-foot lockers. Right now, they have five-foot six lockers. And I again thought, I thought they were going to be a little small, so we wanted to place a full-size locker, a six-foot locker. And the five-foot, the five-foot six is actually an odd size, and it's going to six-foot lockers that's standard size. So we are pricing on that, but that's where we're going with the lockers. And we got the color. We got the color, and actually, for a locker that we're putting out right now, it's an excellent locker, and it's probably more robust than any locker that I've actually seen. It's the gauge and the hinging material. It's a strong locker. It's going to last for a long time. That's what you want. So the remaining floor pile abatement and new flooring work is going to be scheduled for this summer. I call phase three, but it's also going to happen this summer. We are going out to bid this coming week on the final roofing, which is the asphalt shingle. So initially, when we went out to bid with the asphalt shingle work, it didn't come in with the dollars that we expected. We went back and we looked at scope. We're going back out to bid with that, and again, that work will be completed this summer. So what I've done here, this is, and I don't want to spend too much time on this, but it gives you an idea of what the contractor's looking at and what was in part of the bid. So when you look at the different colors, you'll see, this is the curtain wall replacement at Chancellor. You'll see how we're actually moving through the building. Now, this is a fluid document. It'll change, but it gives the contractors an idea of how we're moving through the building. So I called it phase one. June 29th is the first real day we can get back into play, and that's a Monday. So I gave them a certain period of time to do that front portion of the building, and as you see, we sort of wrap around the building, and then we end in the back. And then the green, the green areas are areas that we sort of fill in. There's sort of areas that we overlap, but the most important areas are the program areas. The program areas, you'll see, there's specific dates that we have to get them done. And then the green areas, we're saying, hey, these areas are going to overlap, and we have to make sure, that's all fill-in work, especially, of course, the prime entry. That'll be one of the things we have to, you know, make sure it's done by the end of the summer. So you see, this is how the contractors bid the work. They understand that there's a real, they're not just going to come in and take it, they have to move through the building the way we want to. And as we move through the building, we give it back to Sheldon so he can clean those areas up to get it presentable. And so there's a reason for how this works. And this was, this was talked about prior to going out to bid as well. So this gives you an idea of the phasing for this building. You can see there's work that was done summer of 2019, and then work continued on in 2020. So the green area is the front area of the building. That's the area of the first and second floor that we worked on this summer and was completed. The yellow area was the area we're sitting in right now, the library, and then across the hall, we also did the carpet replacement in this area. So those are the two areas that we really focused on. Going into summer of 2020, you'll see the back two wings. That's where we're going to start. We're going to start on the farthest back wing, and then we're going to move towards the interior wing. And that's, everybody's already in play, and we should feel pretty comfortable about, you know, getting this work done. The final area, you see in red, that's in front of the middle school gym, and then going back towards Sheldon's work area, that's the final area. And again, that's the last area we're saying we want to focus on. We want to get the program areas done first, and then the, you know, the red area. You see, I have that starting on August 10th through the August 21st. So that's my timeline to closing down the front entry there. So again, this has been talked about. This is the plan across two summers. Everybody's all ready for it and, you know, feel pretty good about it. The one thing I want to mention, and it has been discussed, is the guidance area is still closed from the area, from the work that we did this summer. So there's a product that's used, it's a chemical removing agent for the mastic, and it has an odor. It's not bad for you, but it has an odor. It's almost like, some people don't like bleach, you know? Some people, there's certain odors that people can adhere to. So there's an odor there, and what we're trying to do right now is just figure out where the product is. Is it still there? And try to remediate that product to, you know, people going back in there. And it's, just want to make sure everyone understands, it's not a safety issue, it's like sitting in somebody's car that has a really strong air freshener. It's just one of those, some people can take it, some people can't. And what we're trying to do right now is figure out where the product may be wicked, maybe wicked up into some sheetrock, or maybe wicked into some existing wood that was there, and it just continued, just to let its, it's off-gassing. And so right now, we're saying, hey, let's try to figure out where it's off-gassing, why it's off-gassing, and before we let anybody back in there. So I want to mention that. I'm going to keep going through if you guys have questions about that afterwards. Definitely talk about that. Contract status, date. The final... The final contract says $0. It's not $0, it's 917,000. So we're, 6,910,000 is what's currently in our books plus the site contract. Site contract that was awarded was 916,837. So we're at 7,558,333. Our goal from, from the beginning of this project was to award contracts at 8.5 million. That's where we wanted to be. Again, your bond is 12,890,000. We wanted to be at 8.5 million because above and beyond that, you have your contingencies and your incidental costs. So right now we're at 7, 7.5 and, well, actually 7 million plus a whole $550,000. $550,000 for the next phase of bidding. So I think that's what brings us to 7.5. And that's the asphalt shingle work. And if we can hit that, that puts us in a situation where about a million dollars on the budget. So once we've come to bid day, which is going to be middle of March, we're going to come back to you guys, make the recommendation soon afterwards. If we're in a good position where we are at that million dollars on the budget. There were alternates that we didn't take on the site work side. For example, there's, there's work that Sheldon thinks is pretty important and we're going to come back to you guys and make recommendations on awarding certain alternates so that we can get that work done at the same time. So we're in a great position on, on the money side and the contract performed the way they should. We've already bought everything out. The only thing that we haven't bought out is the asphalt shingle. That's, and it's, it's going to be an American-made product, so we're going to be able to make sure we move ahead with that. Project photos. This just gives you just a little flavor of some of the work that was done this summer. You know, Chancellor, there was a, you know, we've full gut of that kitchen, a lot of new equipment, new drainage. There's some new floor tile pieced into existing. So, you know, the kitchen really came out really nice and I think right now we're pretty happy with the work with it. I, you know, I feel pretty good about what we're after that. The other big project, again, the foam roofing. So what was, what we did was there was an infrared scan done to really show wet areas of, of your roof, those wet areas. And you can see it on the upper left area. The wet areas are cut out. They cut out to the deck and they're prepped and then refolded and then fi, and then the final coating is a, a new coating. So it just gives you an idea, and that was done throughout the whole roof. Those red, those red areas, that infrared, and that was bid that way. So right now you have 15-year warranty on all of your foam roofs. The acoustics in the gym, walls and ceilings. There's acoustics all, all throughout the high school gym. You guys had a major problem there with the acoustics, so that was completed this summer. Middle school gym, looks great. We did ceiling work there, flooring work, we just, you know, it's like a new, it's like a new space. The windows here, window replacements, a couple of photos inside the classrooms of how it looks. So on the inside, you'll see the windows, new sills. You see the title window and then on the outside, you'll see the, what's, what it looks like. It came out really, came out really nice. Flooring, we talked about flooring. There was flooring abatement and new V Z T tile put down. And then we're also areas that we put down new carpet. So not just here, but there were classrooms on the second floor that they got, they got new carpet. Generator, it's not working yet, but it's, it's in play and it's in, it's set and it's going to be online this summer. A V E C work, this is the work that I talked about and in your length edition. So you can actually see the exhaust coming from areas, coming back into a main trunk and that main trunk is getting rid of a lot of the hot air. It's just, it's just moving air, which is what's required. We've got to circulate air. And what was happening up in that top air is just holding. The air wasn't moving. Safety, I want to just finish up on safety. Joe was talking about it. If anyone hears about any safety concerns, please, you know, bring it to our attention. We stress at our, at our meetings that there's a separation between contractors and any staff of students. Contractors are required, wear ID badges. We do have full-time supervision on site and all communication is through us. We try to make sure and Sheldon did great about that. Contractors come, talk to us first and then we can make sure there's no ambiguity or differences of opinion. Come to us first, let's talk about what you guys bought and then we can sit down and we can talk shop. So that's where we're at. I think, overall, I think we're in a good place. It's a good project. As always, you go through ups and downs, but we feel pretty good about where we're at. And I appreciate, got to be honest with you, the support, Joe, Tom, they've been great. Sheldon's been, Sheldon's involved every day. He's in our job meetings. He's involved, so, you know, without, without these guys, we can't, we can't do our job. So it's, we're at.
And it seems like everything's been going pretty smooth, which is great. I mean, I'm sure on your end, not so much, but you know, it seems like it to us.
Yeah, I polished it up. If there was a big problem, like, you know, the guidance areas where we're continuing to just, you know, the odor.
But so you're sure you've identified what it was? Because last time we still didn't know what it was. So you, you definitely know what it is? It's just a matter of-
We know it's the product. Now it's the product wicked in certain areas and we're just trying to figure out how to, how to remediate that in the best way. What we don't want to do is put staff back in there and it continue to be the problem. So we're just trying to figure, we've been picking you apart. Appreciate the patience on that. Any questions?
I have two questions. One, I do know the, I know the meaning of wick, but I'm not sure everybody around this table understands what wick means. Could you explain that to, to us?
It's like a sponge, right? You're so, you can put a sponge in water. That sponge will get saturated with water. So it wicks, right? So porous materials will wick. So when you look at that area, what, what can, what will wick the most or what will saturate the most? Gyp, which is your sheetrock materials. Wood, which is, there are portions of areas, it's not all metal stud framing. Wood will wick. And then your concrete, if it's, depending on how long it's been there or how long it's been sealed, concrete will also, is porous. Concrete will also wick or take, in some. So we're trying to figure out where is it coming from? Everything was done at ground level. There wasn't anything done in the ceilings.
My second question, I don't plan to be here for the next major project. I don't think Sheldon will be here either and I'm not sure about everybody around here. But one of our concerns was the middle school gym floor. And we're afraid that it might be too thin already, but I was glad to see we're able to sand it, recoat it and everything. The next time we do a project that we have to address that floor, would we need to replace the floor or do you think we can get another sanding out of it? And you may not know that answer.
I, I don't know the answer, but I'll, from watching and having seen the guys doing it, when, when floors are to a point where you can't get any more out of it, you start seeing a lot of wear on nails, you know, because that's parquet floor. You see the wearing of nails or movement, a lot of movement in the floor. That floor is actually, I think it's in pretty good shape. And how many times you guys have taken that down?
I think it's the third time. I think it's kind of first, I haven't seen the first time. This is just the third time. I think we will be done for, for 20 years.
Okay, good. Well, that'll be long.
Yeah, I get it. You got some time on it.
You too.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. I just wanted to know.
It's really good shape.
Good, good. I'm glad to hear that.
I mean, that's what it looks like after.
Yeah, I mean, it's brand new, so.
Yeah, I understand that that floor is installed in, will be for 1980.
Okay. I just tried to inform the rest of the boards, case down the road?
Yeah.
That comes up.
Forty-plus year old floor and a half.
Yeah, it's, it's on the floor, but I think he's still got, he got some time on it.
Yeah, no, it looks great, so.
The only other question I think I have is the field work that's going to be done this summer, that's going to go into the fall or will there be disruption for the fall sports season with that? There will be, right?
So we, yeah, we're going to affect the sports program. So the idea was to take it here in the spring. Any of the fields that we take, they need progress. There's two growing seasons. So the idea would be to take it spring, finish it by the fall. So the fall will be the first growing season, summer or spring of some, spring of 2021, second growing season, and then you're back on it in the fall of 2020.
And that's the front field and the back? Is it both fields? I don't remember.
We're field and we are-
The small-
It's all, we're, we're all over.
All of it.
Yeah. And then Chancellor as well, we're going to field work. What's good here is, you know, we're putting in irrigation system. So that really helps develop the turf. So I'll be able to establish that real pretty quick.
Could you remind us, what's the alternate arrangement for students to apply?
Oh, that's probably not a, that's probably not a Lou question.
Yeah.
I gotta hit, I gotta have to sit down with Steve to figure that out as far as that's concerned. He hasn't brought it to my attention because he doesn't know exactly where are, are all the practices going to be held and at what times and that, but he is aware of it. He's, I know he's thinking about it.
At least I've been, Steve and I have been talking about it. We're good for this spring and he has, he has-
As I'm assuming there'll be, right, there'll probably be additional costs, right? Busing or whatever if we have to go other places.
Possible, yes.
That we have to budget for now, probably?
You may have to, yes. I took a little bit of money out of there. You have to put some money back into there.
Okay. Thank you for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything.
Oh, for you guys.
When things are going good.
Yeah.
Some things aren't going good.
When Sheldon, Sheldon took us on a nice tour the, in the fall, showed us. All right, principals report.
Just, once again, I have to thank our special team, the prefects.
That's great.
We kept some of that hidden from the main. So I just wanted to thank you. And I'll certainly do that tomorrow in our information.
Yeah.
As promised, shortly after I saw you last, we were able to, whoop. We were able to put out our first edition, our first issue of the CLS Chronicle. I really want to thank Rose Wheeler and Una Isurle, and she's, these two students have really just moved forward since I last saw you, since this issue came out. They successfully created, they're actually working on, you know, in these couple of days before the next issue that'll come out in about a week. And one of the additions, they did success with the first issue, kind of letting students know about how they can present articles. So we have a box, the way it's decorated, it's actually on paper in the front lobby, and students are able to submit work. So we'll see what comes out. And that's each month I'll bring you the new issue, but that's the first in made voice. It did quite a, quite a good job.
Wow, that's impressive.
I always spent a lot of time and it's a chance for it. It's really, it's worded, well-written. You can tell the girls spent a lot of time on it and quite proud of it. Hopefully we've got some more authors. But that's the first issue to do. Our PE Council, I just wanted to point out in case you hadn't seen it, and, you know, it's, it's a little long, but I'll, I'll leave it for you. We made the cover of Duchess, Northern Duchess News. And basically, you know, the first kind of sentence in that article says empowering students with leadership and learning skills. And I think that really sums up in a nutshell, the PE Council and those initiatives that, you know, thanks to you, you support very early in school years, one of the first enrichment opportunities we get. And just a reminder, Mr. Yernell and Larry Anthony, they work together to work with those students inside of, Larry working with those students as well. And they really, you know, in addition to their adherence to classroom rules, levels of sportsmanship, they also have to kind of self-advocate through an essay as to why they'd be a good member of the CLS. You may remember I had talked about peer mediation and that, the reason I mentioned it a couple of meetings ago was because we kind of talked the game a little bit, stole Mr. Yernell's idea from the PE Council to apply it to students applying for peer mediation. So to, and then really focusing on that self-advocacy, giving them kind of a prompt and allowing them to, to provide any kind of reasons why they do good for the position. So we did that same kind of process with PE Council and peer mediation. I just wanted to mention, as, as far as all the programs that you, you folks generously approve, I wanted to let you know about an extra environmental program that we're doing. So students will be learning about composting, container gardening, reducing, reusing and recycling. And that really, so it's one of our last approved enrichment programs and we're putting out to parents this week to start gauging interest for students. And this one's our, you post, as you know, most of our enrichment programs starting to happen in the morning, but this one is one that's going to happen in the afternoon, which is nice. So we have students signing up for that. And I just wanted to let you know about it simply because it really connects very much to our cafeteria recycling program and just, those students are going to be working on making posters and just awareness and channels. So it's something that's really getting a lot of traction, a lot of schools and students. We have three teachers teaching that, so hopefully we'll have it to 40 students in that, in that program. In addition, I had to share, this is something very recent, Mrs. Collins, one of our fifth grade teachers, she's kind of gotten into figuring out ways to create virtual field trips and I think we've talked about that in, you know, middle school, high school around this, this period of evenings like this. And I just wanted to point out, she uses something called exploring by the seat of your pants is the name of it. And if anyone, no one has ever heard of it before, I wanted to kind of, just this morning, we were able to have students involved in it. So I wanted to kind of just read you a quick letter that we sent home to parents because it's a live feed where you get to speak to scientists around the world and have conversations about a lot of different things. So this was an 8:30 live feed, so we had to reach out to Mrs. Collins' parents and see if they can get the students in a little bit earlier to participate. So we had an opportunity to go live in Kenya to the old Pejeta, as I believe how we, we say, conservatory. Our class will meet with two northern white rhinos alive on the planet and the people who are caring for and protecting them. It's the largest black rhino sanctuary in East Africa and home to two of the world's last remaining northern white rhinos. It has some of the highest predator densities in Kenya and still manages a very successful livestock program. It also seeks to support the people living around its borders to ensure wildlife conservation, translates, support the people living around the borders to ensure wildlife conservation, translates to better education, healthcare and infrastructure for the next generation of wildlife guardians. So we were able to do a live feed this morning at 8:30 and it was very well attended. I think almost every student in the class was able to be there. So in addition to, that was one of the initial offerings. And basically I just, I won't read it to you, but I wanted to show you a lot of props Everything from that conservatory I mentioned to a turtle hospital in Florida, to Toronto Zoo on polar bears. So they get to really, in addition to seeing the animals live, they get to see all the people that really work with them and have conversations about the local things they're doing. doing. There's an Arctic scientist in Greenland on February, also earlier this week, some upcoming, one that really stood out, sorry, was the Goriel Forest Ecologist in Finland, that'll be on February twenty seventh at nine. So some of these actually were in the cloud during our classroom time. So the one we did this morning obviously was a little early, but sometimes they work during school, so we're hoping to take advantage of that for Mrs. Collins' class, taking some virtual field trips. And unlike some of the versions I've seen, this is really live, you get to speak to an actual human being who's working with these animals. So that's something we've been hoping to gain traction in the building. I wanted to give you a heads up about Great Body Shop, as you know, we do it in third and fourth grade. There are, in addition to taking care of your body, there are parts of that curriculum that takes care of your, you know, mind, that speaks to the mind and how we think and metacognition. And recently, we had a couple of lessons coming up, the third, fourth, and fifth about emotional regulation. So I just wanted to kind of, I told you, we continue over the school year, I mean, give you updates about how we're continuing with our conversation with lin lions, keeping that conversation going in our building. So we were able to, I think I had mentioned to you before, we were able to secure a video that we showed, it was about just under a half hour, the lin lions put together specifically for elementary students, their parents, staff. So we, while we're working on getting memberships so that every classroom K through five in the building can show that video, you know, over time, not necessarily a half hour of time span, but maybe ten in increments depending on the grade. Lisa Hackett partnered with, Lisa Hackett, our PE teacher who teaches it, partnered with our social worker Morgan Labruto. And what we did was we kind of combined the GBS emotional regulation lessons with lin lions' conversations around kind of the biology of naming your worry and the relationship between your amygdala and the prefrontal cortex and how that works and how you, like, fight or flight and those kind of things. We connected it to GBS, which talks about emotional regulation, name it to name it. So we put the two together, and what we did was we will be having an assembly with third, fourth, and fifth grade students, so they'll get to watch it together. And then Lisa and Morgan will then debrief over the following week or so with each of the individual clients as they have conversations about it. So kind of taking GBS, adding to, and using the lin lions' conversation, keeping that conversation going with staff and students for the year. Couple of interesting things in the community I wanted to let you know about that I'm being involved in. There's some, the Star Library is working with an architect to work out on a major project to create a lot of their infrastructure and other things. And they're having some planning meetings, and they reached out to community members, and they did reach out to me. So I'm going to be looking, working with them. They're, they're hoping that people they invite can sit with the architect for twenty or thirty minutes at a time and have conversations about feedback around how they can evaluate their current facility and usage patterns as well as community needs. So like I said, they're looking for ways to connect kind of school, home, and library. So I offered my, my time, I'll be coming down on Thursday, I'm sorry, on the ninth. Thursday is another organization I'm going to be visiting. Shirley Hoffman from Asser Head Start in Red Hook reached out to me. That's one of the preschools that feed into Chancellor. I'm always looking for ways to kind of increase that communication. There's some that do amazing job, like Little Feed every year. And so like unsolicited, they send me, I always look for my little envelope of information of the students that are coming in. But I'm finding other ways, looking for other ways to interact with other preschools who are feeding into our building. So Shirley invited me for this Thursday, I'll be going at eleven o'clock for some classroom visits in their building. And then she's organized with the parents that will be transitioning to Chancellor and kindergarten to meet with me after that on their facility. And then the hope is I can organize a tour for all of them down the road. And you know, the more I can do that with the, the many preschools that feed our building, I think the better. So looking forward to that. Currently, our book fair, thanks to the PTSO, is happening at Chancellor. We have our high school social this Thursday. And I certainly want to thank the PTSO for all their hard work. I just met with some of the members this morning to discuss book donations to, to accompany our hack program and other students of the community to help out with that. And some upcoming events. Plans are underway to bring our three to five students to see the Addams Family live at that high school, like the reality assessment. So Sandy Kane, she'll be, it's good to hear from her. And we'll be organizing that, we'll be talking Great Elder General Friday about planning that. And I just wanted to give a shameless plug as part of the Health and Loans Committee, and thank you to the RSF for helping us organize Street Ages viewing, the next chapter, which is going to be on the evening of March fifth. So looking forward to that too. So keep the information out to people that are coming and join us.
Questions, Rusty King? So that enrichment class where they're going to learn about composting, do you think that will turn into composting at Chancellor?
It could. It's, you know, composting has come up a couple of times in my eleven years there.
Yeah.
There's some logistics.
Sure.
That go with it and some other things. But I'm always open to the possibility and hoping that maybe students can come up with, you know, solutions. Much bigger conversation about me than if you get, you know, Sheldon involved, and I know he has a lot of projects. But, but it's possible to get.
Yeah, it'd be great.
You know, it's kind of programs like that that really got some of the other in-house recycling programs that got interior going. So I'm always open to the students trying to take it.
So many great things going on, and what an amazing presentation, how great your students did. I mean, they came up here and they did great, so thank you.
Thank you guys. I did have the opportunity to share a few things going on at BMS. Sheldon ran out too quickly, but following up that presentation about the, about the building project, I just wanted to give some kudos to him because, you know, as the gentleman from the Plumbrow group said, they're really trying to work around instruction. And Sheldon, and there's, there's a lot of work that went on over the summer upstairs. There's a lot of work continues to go on upstairs with that ventilation system on the weekends and after hours. And I really want to thank Sheldon because it has not affected construction in my building, which I think is pretty impressive. I wanted to start with a little update on social emotional learning. I know I've reported out to you a couple of times this year about the work that Alice Coleman is doing with our sixth grade students, trying to build resiliency in our students and address anxiety. This month, Megan Roigier, our school social worker, she presented to our seventh grade, she's done a series of presentations for our seventh grade health classes on stress and mindfulness, both recognizing what happens in their bodies when they experience stress, focusing on both the physical sensation of the stress and kind of what's going on, their biological processes, so that they can identify the sensations. And then she's teaching that number of mindfulness techniques that hopefully they will use to be escalate themselves. She's done it in a series of presentations with some, quite a bit of time in between, allowing them to kind of take that, absorb it, and hopefully put it into practice elsewhere. And again, this, this kind of piggybacks on our work helps to support the work that our sixth grade students did with Alice Coleman last year. She returned to the seventh grade classes to continue teaching mindfulness at these. She also worked with the seventh grade students in teaching them about the work of Carol Dweck. She's done a lot of work on growth mindset versus fixed mindset as students are looking to move through difficult tasks and kind of overcome challenging, challenging situations and shift their thinking. Her work in the sixth grade classes is going to begin next month. She intends to go in and work with them before the state assessments, which are at the end of this month, as well as working with them before their top one hundred presentations, really focusing on public speaking. In seventh grade classes, our students have begun their outsiders unit. This is a unit that Nancy Abel started many, many years ago, was a little controversial at that time. Courtney Green has kind of taken it and run with it, continue to expand upon it. And students are asked to select from one of, I think we have seven different novels right now that we're using, that they are then put into student facilitated literature circles, kind of work through, based on tasks set by Ms. Green, kind of work through the themes of bullying and social isolation that many of these books focus on, and then look to foster discussion amongst themselves, along with their peers. There are some activities that try to take that work home so that they foster discussion at home with parents, and really try to tie some of the themes of these novels of the reading into their own experiences. The last Saturday, BMS students and one of our, one of our board members, children participated, participated in the fifth annual eighth grade science fair. As you'll recall, this is a collaborative effort between Lyndon Avenue Middle School and the eighth grade students there, and Mrs. Cogel and our eighth grade students here. This year, we had ten students participate, which I think is the greatest number of students we've had participate in five years that we've been doing this. By comparison, Red Hook had fifteen, only five more. There were a couple of glitches this year, I think along, along the lines of some discrepancies within the scoring. But I am pleased to report that one of our students came in second and missed out on the top spot by only a fraction of a point, less than, less than one point. And in addition, as I believe I mentioned last time, the college is still working with the Red Hook middle school teacher and Ms. Cogel to try and work on offering some research opportunities to the top three scorers from each of the programs. Students presented their original research project to a panel of three judges. And then during the tallying of the results, and this is something that they've done each year, an example of a presentation by Dr. Emily McLaughlin, Associate Professor of Chemistry and Associate Dean of the College on key reality as it relates to asymmetry in nature, how often I come across a word that I'm not familiar with. Key reality was a new one for me, and Mrs. Cogel taught me all about it this afternoon. Participation in this event continues to be something that we value. We're trying to increase participation. And Mrs. Cogel and I have talked about the possibility of extending this opportunity to sixth and seventh grade students. We haven't quite figured out how to do that yet, but hopefully continue to, to have that as a goal. The last week, parent Alyssa Kaudishol spent a day with our sixth grade science classes and another day with our seventh, our eighth grade science classes, speaking about her experiences while living in our bar. She has come in and shared her experiences in the past, it's been very well received. She demonstrated the use of her cold weather beer and some of the equipment that she used while living there. She also brought in many rock samples and fossils to share with our students. It tied in well with our sixth grade students and their units on weather and rocks and minerals. And it tied in well with the lessons that our eighth grade students are doing on energy transfer. It was, it was, it was very, very well received. Interesting to see some of our teachers walking around the building in subzero full weather. Thanks to the sponsorship of the student council, being a student will participate in two charity fundraisers over the course of the next couple of weeks. First up, we have our annual winter dance, that'll be held this Friday evening. As they've done the last couple of years, the student council leadership has decided and voted this is going to be an SPCA fundraiser. Last year, believed we were able to collect about seven hundred, just over seven hundred items. Student council is donating as a raffle this year. Again, as they've done in the past, they always pick some sort of, whatever the new technological gadget out there that the kids are really interested in. So they have a couple of Alexa products, I think an Echo, a DOT, that they're going to be trading. Students are going to receive tickets toward this raffle in exchange for the goods that they bring in for the dance. Secondly, we're going to bring back an old favorite out of retirement. We're going to bring back our staff volleyball tournament. We haven't done this since two thousand twelve. Some of us, me included, haven't picked up a volleyball since two thousand twelve, but we will be back out on the court next Friday afternoon in the name of charity. Hopefully, we, a fun event for everyone. For this event, students in attendance will have the opportunity to vote for one of three charities, St. Jude's, the American Cancer Society, and Operation Delta Dog, which is one I hadn't heard of before, but this organization, they wanted a veterans organization. And so Mr. Weisenthal, our student council advisor, reached out to a very good friend of his who was an ex-Marine and said, you know, give me an organization that students will put behind. So Operation Delta Dog is an organization that rescues homeless dogs and trains them to be service animals for veterans with PTSD. So my guess is we probably found the winner. But one of those, one of those, one of those three charities will receive all of the pros and parts of our staff. In other club news, the BMS STEM club, welcome back Dr. Mark Condon. He's a Duchess County Community College Biology Professor. You recall that last year, Dr. Condon came in and dissected a shark for our BMS STEM club at the, at the request of one of the STEM club organizers. And he was back this year, and this year he dissected a cow heart. I believe we had eighteen, eighteen to twenty students in attendance, led to some very in-depth conversation about heart disease and the causes of stroke and heart disease. So it was an excellent opportunity for our students. Couple of upcoming events, seventh grade health classes later on this month, we're going to welcome in representatives from Cape to speak to classes about the dangers of toad bill invading. These are speakers we haven't had, and the topic, we have not had speakers in for, before, but obviously with the prevalence these days, we think it's very important. We're looking forward to, to her coming in. Career Day, I mentioned that last time, and I put the plug in, I'll put the plug in again. Career Day is right around the corner, on March twentieth. We're still looking for presenters. Really, this year, we're trying to ensure that we have an eclectic mix of presenters, and we've actually reached out, friends, neighbors, community members. We're targeting some of the trades and making sure that we have kind of a cross section of all, all careers represented. And we're also working with some of our at-risk students on really matching them up with something that they might be interested in the future. And finally, March third, I believe it's the eleventh year that we've done this, we have our annual Top Chef competition coming up. Rumor has it, we're going to have several new judges from, from local restaurants in the community, regular service judges to share.
So much going on in the middle school. Thank you for sharing.
Hello, I'd like to start as usual with some updates from our academic side. This requires a little bit of background. One of Rhonda Keil's alum graduated early two thousand, named Sarah Hetty. She's a poet and a published writer. She's also the librettist for an opera that's in production, the opera is entitled Palceon. And its subject is the now closed women's college in Millbrook, Penn and College. So Ms. Hetty reached out to us with her, with the opera company she's working with, and asked if any of our departments would like to partner with this company and bring some learning opportunities for students. So we've met a couple of times with one of the producers for the opera and a company called Vital Opera. And in the spring, Ms. Hetty and some other writers are going to be working with our creative writing classes, writing about plays. And some musicians will be working with our student vocalists to learn about opera, to learn about opera appreciation. So we're looking forward to that, that partnership. In our art classes, with the support of ENT, students in Ms. Bear's classes use both their knowledge of anatomy and proportion to draw from live models in order to create a piece of art that captured movement and emotion as expressed by the green floor. And if you have a moment, if you haven't seen them already, in the New Wave hallway, there's some examples of their work. Also in our music department, on April first, our band and chorus students will travel together to New York City to attend a performance of the Broadway show Girl from the North Country. This features songs from Bob Dylan, and it's written by, it's written by Conrad first. In our guidance department, tomorrow, our sophomores, twelve of them, will take a field trip to the Creative Technical Institute to get an overview of the programs offered at, at CTI to help them plan their junior and senior years. In BLPT updates, the BLPT is working with the Bar of the Prison Initiative to bring a program to our students that features an abridged version of the playing movie College Behind Bars. Bars, and a guest speaker, graduate from Bard Prison Initiative, will address our students as well. I want to take a moment to provide a brief faculty update. Our faculty are continuing work with the Yale Center for Adult and Young Patients. We've just been introduced to the third of four ruler tools. If you remember, there are four ruler tools, Charter, the Mood Leader, the Meta Moment, and the Blueprint for Conflict. We're just learning about the Meta Moment, and we're going to continue our training with the Yale Center in order to bring these skills and this information to our students next year. And some of these ideas as faculty are incorporating them and learning about them already being used in a variety of our classes. In extra curricular news, the Creative Writing Club, a charity scouting bee later in March, in support of Literacy Connections at Dutchess County. Our Debate Club this Friday will be attending the Ninth Annual Middle and High School Debate Tournament at Bard. Students will be debating three motions for the 2020 tournament. One is that the imposition of BBC-style impartiality on all news platforms. Another resolution motion for debate would be abolishing the Olympic Games. And the third topic for debate would be that liberal democracies, the House should implement or society should implement social credit system. So we look forward to hearing how our students' site experiences turn with it and how they feel. In Drama Club news, tickets are now on sale for the Addams Family, which will be performed March 27th, 28th, and 29th in the Joseph L. Family Auditorium. We're again offering tickets for sale online, and we found that that's been a very smooth process to migrate to that system for some of the tickets. Our Gender Equity Club will attend the Seventh Annual Love Doesn't Hurt, Love Shouldn't Hurt Conference on Monday, March 9th, with Dutchess County Community College. The Love Shouldn't Hurt Conference is a youth conference meant to engage students in how to identify the warning signs of unhealthy relationships and how to support their friends who may be in unhealthy relationships. Last week, our Model U N followed up with our relationship, our partnership with Kelly Mycroft. And remember that Ms. Mycroft spoke with all of our students in the Assembly here. With the support of Mr. Moore and the Tech Department, Mr. Jensen, Michelle Ramandi, and Brandon O'Hara, our students, interested students in ninth period, were able to communicate with Kelly through Instagram Live. And I'm well out of my area of expertise, but I will say that Ms. Mycroft was in South Africa, she was home, and she was speaking through, communicating through Instagram Live, our students in the Joseph L. Family Auditorium during ninth period at the same time. And I think there's, as you know, seven right now, students. So this was, it worked fantastically well. It really opens up a lot of opportunities for our students to partner with students and adults all over the world. So kudos to Mr. Moore and the Model U N for bringing this opportunity to our students. In the student council update, the student council's plans to administer a student engagement survey have finalized with the support of Mr. Preps's office. We are intending to administer these surveys to our Ninth and Fifth Incorporators in mid-March. We'll have information about the survey for parents coming out probably in this week in our March news letter. As you'll remember, earlier in February, we sent a number of our students to the Youth Empowerment and Sustainability Summit, February 6th and February 8th. The students brought back a lot of great information and some action plans for our community to begin to develop sustainability plans. I've met with several of the students, and as a first step, they're planning some activities for Earth Week. My understanding is Earth Day is April 22nd. They want to have the Earth Week, 20th to 24th, which will feature public service announcements and other activities to bring attention and awareness to the problem of sustainability. Lastly, coming up, this always cheers me up, I hope it cheers you up as well, Junior Varsity, Varsity Athletics begin March 9th. That's just like hearing pictures and catches reported. It's getting colder, it's getting warmer, students will be exercising outside. And our Tech Week for the musical will begin on March 20th.
All right. Questions, anybody? Thank you, thank you. Okay, 2020-21 Budget Development Update.
All right. Not much of an update, but in front of you, you should have just a one-pager that will look like this. I've only made two changes to the budget since the last time. We have not met with our administrative council, and we'll be doing that tomorrow. So get their feedback to help us craft the budget. So some things that have occurred since the last time. Two Fridays ago, I attended our workers' comp meeting in which had some great news. We had more than a 15% drop in our actual rates from the previous year, and I increased it by 7,000, and then we had a decrease of upwards of 35,000. So you see a $42,000 decrease there. The workers' comp program's in a very good footing at this moment, so looking forward to, you know, the next coming years, because our annual bill was much higher than what it currently is at $135,000. I think that's the lowest it's been in probably two decades. So it's in a good place. Our health insurance, I attended the D-HIC meeting last Tuesday. Discussions were had about the status of negotiations, and they felt as though the rate would come in around 4% next year. Could go a little bit lower than that, but right now, I've just conservatively made it 5%. And that reduced our balance by $110,000. So at this time, I was able to take out of the budget $152,000. So just to give you an idea, if you go to the bottom line, right now, we are above the tax levy limit of just under $166,000. So still have a little work to bring that to the tax levy cap, but we're marching towards it, that's for sure. We're close to being, you know, to that number, and it's a matter of a lot of items to take into consideration. We did go over the Finance Committee, which I know will be coming up here shortly, as we talked about the budget in Finance for, I think it was about two hours ago, actually. So we had a nice discussion, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that in the Finance Committee update. I'd expect to have a complete new draft for you at our, is that March 10th? So our March 10th meeting, as you know, will be at 6 o'clock.
A work session at 6.
A work session from 6 to 7 o'clock, instead of doing the Saturday work session, which was scheduled for the 14th, that Saturday morning. We will have all our administrators in attendance for that, to be able to ask questions of them. And then two weeks later, at our March 24th meeting, we'll have a second work session in which, you know, my thought is that we will be inviting back those you want to have come back to talk with you or meet with you. I'm not sure if you want all the administrators to come back. You may want to have the select ones, maybe the principals, where you have more questions about. You may not have questions of, I'm going to say Sheldon Teeter or Steve Jensen. I don't want to bring them back if you don't have questions, but if you have questions, please let us know. Bring them all back.
They've all been put on notice, right?
Put on notice. But like I say, if there's anybody who you really don't think needs to come back, and you won't know until after your March 10th meeting, and then we can make that adjustment as we go forward. Questions about the budget where we are currently? We're in a good place this year. There are still some items that have to be determined yet. I'm meeting tomorrow with Jason, he's from Bernie Donigan's office. We'll be going over the Capitol Project, the status of that, which will also include discussions about the Dutchess County Capitol Project.
Bozies, yeah.
So those two things will play heavily into the tax cap and how we address it going forward. So more to come on that. So those should be some good conversations tomorrow, will really help us really finalize what the bottom line looks like. Because debt service has not been added to this at all. It still will be within the tax cap, but it's how high the tax levy to go is part of the question we need to ask ourselves. And there's ways to address that.
Okay.
Any questions?
We're looking at 6 o'clock for the, right?
6 o'clock, 6 to 7.
Okay.
Is that for both of those meetings?
Correct.
For both of those meetings.
Are they both in the?
Nope, they're going to be here.
Okay.
Be in here.
Okay, well, it's headed in the right direction, Tom.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. It's good news.
Yeah.
Committee, Board Committee reports, long-range planning.
Does that mean it's just the one?
I think it's just the one.
Yes, yes. Correct. I think you did the last one at the last meeting.
Yeah.
So Long Range Planning Committee met with 11 members of the RTA's Long Range Planning Subcommittee. Diane Lyons reviewed the long-range planning's progression over the last three years and explained why the committee had requested the district administrators to explore what an innovative K-12 restructuring might look like for our staff and students. We expressed the thought that this should be a K-12 solution that addresses the challenges of declining enrollment and limitations on finances, and that the moves the district toward, excuse me, moves the district forward with respect to student achievement and support. Board members emphasized that no final decisions about restructuring have been made to date, and that the board LRP members had been seeking input regarding potential workable options from the district administrative staff and constructional staff before any final decision would be made. Sorry to read these, but they were just written, and I don't have them quite memorized yet. The Board LRP Committee agreed to share these findings with the RCA LRP Subcommittee before any decisions are made and expressed their interest in hearing any suggestions that the RCA Subcommittee might wish to offer. Next meeting is tomorrow.
Questions for LRP? Policy.
So we met on February 20th, and we reviewed Policy 9110, Confidential Managerial Employees. Tom Cornell was recommending that we include longevity language to that particular policy. We reviewed 1410, 1420, 1420R with no changes, 1440, Public Concerns About School, and a title change, it's Tom's title. 1500, Public Use of School Facilities, Edit to Reflect Parts of the Building Not in Use Are Off Limits. 1510, 1511, 1520, 1530, 1612, 1720, No Changes. 1714, Relations with Non-Public Schools, Remove Item Number 2. 1741, 1800, 1810, 1900, No Change. We're meeting again March 1st.
Any questions for policy? Okay, Finance, and Matt's not here, so somebody else take those, please.
So we met on February 21st. Tom gave a review of the budget, first draft. Told us much of the information that we heard tonight about the health insurance and some We discussed the tax levy cap and current fund balance, looking at different options for funding the district's financial allocation to Bozies Project, but additional analysis is needed, as Tom said earlier. We'll have to meet with Bernie Donigan's office to discuss where our options might We discussed the draft budget further, and some of the issues we asked, places where you change the, I don't know. Discuss financial reporting required pursuant to ESSA requirements. Professional development costs need to be consolidated under in-service rather than under, I guess it's under ESSA.
Yeah, it's just all kind of all in the place.
And the goal is to arrive at the budget at the tax levy cap without a large fund balance. We discussed some costs associated with mental health, which is a big issue everywhere. Significant maintenance costs associated for students with disabilities in residential setting. The governor's budget proposes that the 20% that the state currently pays, the governor's budget proposes that that 20% be shared with the school districts. So this will just be then the funding approximately, it's close to 40%. Current draft budget is still working document, and we'll bring up changes.
Any questions for Finance?
When is the, when, so are they going to vote on the budget?
Well, the governor doesn't vote on the budget. The legislature is required to adopt the budget by April 1st.
April 1st.
Many years, they missed April 1st by months and months. They, you know, they've been, yeah, they've been pretty good. They've been pretty good over the last number of years. They've been pretty close to April 1st, but that's their deadline by law.
So we'll find out if this 60% is actually through on that.
Well, that's part of the whole package, right. We also talked about with our legislators, which I'll mention a little later, that the governor's budget does some funky things with combining aids that aren't particularly favorable to school districts. That's something else that we should know by or around that April 1st, how that's going to pan out. They're working on the budget pretty fast and furious up in Albany now. So stay tuned for another two months, basically, yeah.
Any other questions for Finance? I think I have questions, and I'm going to keep them for the budget workshop. Okay, moving on to good news. Anybody have any good news? I would just say we had a lovely event on Friday. There's so many people to thank. Whitney's first on my list. And our students, what an amazing job our students did. I think they just made the whole event, honoring the man over here. I think the auditorium, I think it looks great, and I think it was a very nice.
Yeah, much appreciated, and a lot of people pulled together to make that a special night. But I really, I agree with you. I think given the student speakers and the student performances, it really kept the focus on our kids, which is what we're all here for anyways, so.
And it's certainly what you've been about so far.
Well, thank you, thank you. Yeah, it was good. I got lots of good feedback from people, and it was much appreciated by many. So thank you all for that, too.
Old Business?
I'll save, yeah, I'll save this for other, I'm not sure exactly what's on Old Business.
I guess Old Business, I don't know if it's Old Business or Other, but just a quick update on the, just a quick update on the superintendent search. It's going well. Next week is our, will be our Day in the District with our finalists on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. People are signed up to attend. The board is looking forward to getting that feedback. That's the update on superintendent search. We have an opportunity for public comment. We have an opportunity for public comment? I know, once the kids left.
The basketball game, I think it was.
I knew there must have been a reason.
You don't want to watch the debate on TV, and?
It could be on our own.
Okay, all right.
And moving on to other?
Yeah, I have a couple. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
All right. So, you may recall when I mentioned at our last meeting that I attended the lobby day up in Albany on, I forget what the day was, but February 10th, I think it was. So, on February 18th, I attended Senator Serino's Education Advisory Committee meeting. I have the agenda here, so some of the topics that were discussed were the funding formula changes, the shift for special education that we just mentioned in the finance committee minutes. And so, both at the lobby day and at this meeting, there was a lot of lobbying in favor of mental health assistance for school districts. I think Senator Serino made it quite clear that she's been hearing that from lots of people, and the legislature, she felt very positively that we might see some assistance somewhere, but, you know, she could collaborate, of course, but there is a lot of, you know, people looking for that kind of assistance, so hopefully we'll see something in that area. Also, we talked a little bit about school safety and a couple of other issues, but anyway, it was a good meeting, and I haven't set a date for the next one, but I'm sure it'll be probably next morning sometime.
Well, I know any assistance, mental health, would be appreciated. If it was shared among the districts or among the county, anything that they could do would be appreciated.
Right, the senator is on the Mental Health Committee, and so she's well aware of the issues that are out there.
Okay. Do you have other?
Yeah, I have a couple. Kind of on that theme, and I'm not sure if this was mentioned at, at the February 11th board meeting, but we, some of us have had the opportunity this, during the month of February, to meet with Senator Serino down at her offices in Hyde Park. The, that was, that was an interesting meeting. Did you talk about this the last meeting? Okay, good, so I, I don't want to repeat other people's comments, but we got down there to announce our presence that morning, and the aide who opened the door looked like a deer in the headlights. When we said we were here to meet with Senator Serino, she said, "Well, the senator's not here." Okay, and that's, I'm wondering, did we have the wrong day? Well, anyway, as it turned out, the senator was, got held up in Albany, and part of what held her up there were debates over the issue of merging the thruway authority and the bridge authority. So, she, she got held up there fighting that battle, but to her credit, she, she did call in, so we had, I mean, we were there with Lydia, her aide, who's been there for a while, who's always been very, I think, very, very good to work with, from at least my, my opinion. So, the senator did call in. We had about a 20-minute speakerphone call with her, where we addressed a number of the issues that you as a board, we, you know, we discussed these in January. We took our little cheat sheet with us, and then after the senator had to, had to leave to go back to her business up there, we talked with Lydia for another, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes, or we were there almost 45 minutes. So, again, our purpose in going there is to tell them what, what we need to do a better job, how they can help us, and again, I continue to maintain that. Having those meetings, while nobody is, is handing us a big bag of money to walk out the door with, at least they hear that we have needs. My fear is always that if we don't go, they'll make an assumption that everything's all right with our world, and we don't need any kind of legislative or financial assistance. So, I think it's a good thing that we do. And then, a couple of weeks later, we met with Assemblywoman Cahill over at his office in Kingston. Again, he, he gave us a good chunk of time, I believe it was about 45 minutes that, that we were there. We brought the same issues, obviously, the issues are the same whether we're talking to her or talking to him. You know, we talked about state aid, we talked about the Bosses Capital Project, and how that's going to be addressed. We talked about mental health, financial support, so I, and I got the impression that he's pretty much hearing most of the same issues from the other school districts that he's talking to. So, I'm glad we, we met with him as well. We have still not been able to schedule a meeting, as far as I know, with Assemblywoman Barrett. We'll keep trying. Just so, again, we make the rounds of the three, our three state, elected state representatives to make sure they know what we're happy about, or more frequently, what we're not happy about. So, we'll, we'll keep you posted, but that is kind of, you'll recall at one point, her aide, anyway, was, was interested in having a phone call just with me. And while I'm, I'm happy to do that, I think she needs to hear from board members as well as, you guys are the elected officials, I'm not. So, we'll, we'll keep pushing for that, but, but we'll see if and when it happens.
And I think Mr. Cahill made it, it was pretty clear, you know, we, we, you said it, and we always believe that if they don't hear from us, they don't know what's going on. And I think, you know, he talked about what he puts in his letter to the speaker, and, you know, what he's been hearing from other schools, and so if we don't take the time to do it, he, just like you said, so I think it is, it is important. Whether it changes anything, we don't know, but.
Not for lack of trying.
Yeah.
So, yeah, one more thing about Senator Serino's Advisory Committee. So, for those that don't know, there's a member on that committee from each school district in her senate district. There's administrators, there's board members, there's teachers, depending on, you know, each school district has a, has a representative, but it, they come from different areas, so there's representatives from different.
It's good.
From regional groups that are sitting on that.
Okay, I have another item, if I could, if I could spend a few minutes on it, just so you're aware, while you will be engaged in the, in the, the final superintendent's candidate interviews next week, on Wednesday evening, I will be attending the, yeah, I put it in your packet there, the, the Regents, the New York State Regents have been holding a series of forums, rollouts, whatever, regional meetings regarding, in order to gather feedback on, to quote them, what a state diploma should signify to ensure educational excellence and equity for every student in New York State. Essentially, a discussion of graduation measures. The Regents are looking into the possibility of changing graduation requirements in New York State. So, these meetings have been scheduled around the state. There was a meeting in Orange County, which was supposed to capture Duchess about a month ago. It filled up like very quickly, because they only have like so many seats, Eddie, like 40 or 50 seats, so that, that meeting got filled up. But I will be attending on Wednesday, one of these meetings, yeah, it's over at the, at the old Strubeosse's. It's from 5:00 to 7:00, so you guys will be tied up, but I'm going to go, and I'll bring back whatever information I can, so you're aware of what, what the thinking is. And I may actually talk to Dr. Davenport to see if he's available, and I'd drag him over as well.
Yeah.
So, I just want to let you know that's going on, and we will have at least one person in the room to gather information and say what we need to say. So, just, that's more a heads up. There's probably more information than you, you really want to know, but it's all here. I mean, this is a good thumbnail of what's going to be happening over there, just so you're aware. Another thing I wanted to mention is, just more reminder than anything else, that we, we will, at least as of the last conversation, at the board table that I'm aware of, we will be having two, two board seats for, that are up for election this, at our, at our annual budget vote and, and board election. So, put the word out to, to folks that you think would be good candidates, and encourage them to either get a petition from Whitney, or to go online, and they, they can get one, download one online. And perhaps there are some already circulating out there, but I, for one, regardless of whether I'm in this position, or whether I'm a taxpayer, I don't want to see an election go by with, with not enough people to run for those seats. So, let's not just take it for granted that, that at least two good people will come forward and, and agree to, to serve like you have, and, and it is service, and as you know, it's a lot of hard work, but we need, we need people to run for those seats. And the last one, just a re-mention of the budget work sessions, just that we're trying a different format this year, to see if it might work better, be more convenient for people, be, be more conducive to getting out of it what we want to get out of these budget work sessions, to split them out over those two, two early evening sessions. So, we'll see how they go. And I think that's all I have on your other.
My other is the same kind of as your other, with the board seats, but I just, so the deadline is April 20th, I just wanted to state that again.
Is that right, Whitney?
Right, that's what I had from before. I did get an email from a parent that said they were going to run, but that's just one, and the packet's not in, so it's confirmed.
Yeah, they gotta, they gotta, they gotta follow through.
And then, there is, I just got, so there is, for anyone thinking about running for the board, the Duchess County School Board does a workshop on March, it's going to be March 28th. There's an opportunity to, to learn about what it means. I think we, Mark will be there, right, as the president? And I think Joe, you've been asked to represent superintendents?
I will be the superintendent at the table, yeah.
I was also asked, but I, I don't know yet, so we might all be there. But anyway, it's a good opportunity for people to, to learn about what it means. I don't have any other other.
Yeah, question.
All right. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve spring sports coaches for the 2019-20 school year. Track varsity jumping, William Morrissey, 4,113. Varsity sprinting throwing, Justin Randall, 4,113.
Assembly?
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. The Justin Randall appointment was done two board meetings ago, but it was for different, different events, so it's, it's kind of like a redo. Also, just to follow up to a question that Diane had posed to me this afternoon, I, I was able to get in touch with, with our athletic director, Steve Boucher, regarding your question about JV baseball, because that's where Bill Morrissey had moved over from that position to track. And Steve, Steve said only that the numbers for JV baseball are starting to look better than, than they had a couple of weeks ago, and he has, so, he thinks somebody waiting in the wings to be appointed, assuming we have the numbers by the time the, the sport season is starting, which we heard earlier this evening, is, is March 9th. So, we're getting close. Steve said it's looking better, so, so that it's, it's a, it's a definite maybe.
So, we, will we meet before March 9th to appoint someone, or no?
We'll probably do, like we've done a few times. We'll have Steve Boucher be the JV baseball coach of record for the first two days. You'll appoint that person on March 10th, and then, so to speak.
All right. All those in favor? Motion passes. On the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Jenna Yornell to commence honor about September 8th, 2020, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing through November 25th, 2020, to the extent of her accrued, accrued sick leave, and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave, or thereabouts as requested in writing.
Assembly?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the civil service appointment of Melanie Silkwood to the position of food service helper, 5.75 hours per diem, with a 26-week probational period effective February 24th, 2020, at a salary of step 1, $13 per hour, in accordance with the food service helper hourly step system rate.
Assembly?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution, resolved that the Board of Education approve the terms of the release and settlement agreement involving student number 2019-20-02, a copy of which shall be incorporated by reference in the minutes of this meeting, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools be and hereby is authorized to execute such release and settlement agreement on behalf of the district.
Assembly?
Do you have to first?
You have to first.
Okay, second. Any discussion?
Do you have a motion to tables?
All those in favor tabling the item? That item's tabled. And then, can we have a motion to move into executive session? Oh, oh, I didn't thank.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I neglected to thank some of our donors that were on the consent agenda, so it was.
41.6.
Yep, Mr. Richard Matthews for Rhinebeck Mobile.
Teaching the Hudson Valley.
The teaching of the Hudson Valley, that's another grant, and we have the, is that the only one?
That's it.
That's it, that's it, this board meeting. We always have some generous donors, so, sorry about forgetting that. So, motion to move into executive session.
To discuss legal action here under this?
Yeah, I didn't know what the actual term was. What Joe said?
Student.
Student, yeah.
Correct.
Correct. All those in favor? Okay.
Thanks.